I'll call a meeting to order. This is a regular scheduled commissioner meeting for Grease County. It is November 25th, 2024. Everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call. Avril.
Here.
Eli.
Here.
Zorn.
Here.
Edlin.
Here.
And Trambi is here. So, everybody look at their agenda, give me approval for it and see what guys are thinking.
I make the motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Avril. All in favor, proven agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carried. Okay, let's take a peek at the approval of November 4th and 19th minutes, please. Guys, look at them quickly and see what you're thinking.
I make a motion to approve the November 4th and the November 19th minutes and dispense the reading.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Zorn. All in favor of approving the November 4th and 19th minutes? Say aye.
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 Same sign opposed? Motion carried. Okay, everybody take a peek at the bills. We have a whole bunch of them, I see.
You have a lot because your meeting was on the 4th, so.
Correct. You got three weeks. Yeah, that's right. Want you guys to take anything that really stands out to you, Sam?
No. We are paying my election.
I see that, yep.
So those are in there.
No problem on that one, so.
Sorry, there is one.
Go ahead.
If you go to page seven, North Dakota County Commissioners Association. Sorry, I missed telling Robin not to get that one in there, so if we can have that one taken out until the beginning of next year.
Okay.
Oh, this is January?
Yep, so then it'll be in the new year budget, so sorry about that.
Okay.
We budgeted for that, right? In the next year?
Well, that's the.
Was it that one or was it?
No, it's the other one, right.
I think you should be both, myself, but we'll discuss that one later.
Yeah, we'll discuss it, I guess, that time in the budget sign.
Yep.
Remember we were talking about joining, I'll get a bachelor proposal if I can. We'll make a motion to approve the.
The bills.
The bills, as presented.
Except for the.
With the exception of.
With the exception of.
North Dakota County Commissioners.
Now they're North Dakota County Commissioners Association.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Edlin. This has got to be a voice vote, so. Anyway, so, Avril.
Aye.
Eli.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlin.
Aye.
And Trambi votes aye. So, motion carried. Okay. District One County Commission appointment. So, I asked Lauren to come here and we want to talk to him a little bit about that position. So Lauren, you're sitting in the room here.
I am.
So, why do you want to be on the commission? Let me, let's hear your spiel.
I really have a spiel. I have a lot of experience in a lot of different areas. I thought I could probably be useful to the county commission with my experience.
I see you got.
I'll tell you this, if I don't get it, it doesn't bother me a whole lot. I think I am useful and that's really the. The things that I've been involved in.
You have a lot of.
All of the different agencies I've been involved in.
Because you ran resident on engineering, right? Renaissance. Renaissance Engineering.
Yeah, it was our company.
Yeah.
Before that, I was with the North Dakota Highway Department.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I was a maintenance engineer at the Valley City District.
Okay.
So, I do have different experiences and some of them good, some of them bad. But they make up the total person.
Yeah, no, I see that.
Other than that, if you have any questions, it's a lot easier for me to. To respond to some, you know, something that you have in mind than it is for me to talk about how good I am.
Well, that's good, anyway. Well, guys, what do you, let me, Josh, do you have any questions for him?
Not that I can really think of.
Okay, you're a lifelong resident of the county, pretty much.
Yeah. You know, it was Barney Cooper's song.
Yeah.
I've been around, but actually, I don't think that I've ever had any residence out of the county.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You know, I did, at one time I did, I had an 1,800 acre farm and ranch operation.
That's right, yeah. You ran cattle and livestock and stuff.
Yep. You know, that's part of the experience of my life.
Okay. Edlin?
I don't have any questions.
Any, Zorn, we have some questions for him?
No, not really, I don't think so. So, is he's fully retired from the Renaissance and everything like that now? He's.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
We actually, we took that business down a couple of years ago.
He was on the water board one time, wasn't he? Or was that?
No, no, I was the engineer for the water board.
Oh, you engineer for him, okay.
Yep.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, I remember that, so. Yep.
Yeah, I guess.
That would have been back in the 90s, wasn't it? Mid 90s?
No, it'd have been, it would have been 2010 up to probably 15.
Oh, okay.
Really recently.
Yep.
Okay. No one. Well, the job, of course, it's, there's no pay, you know. It's a long story. We'll leave that one go right now. They'll probably change this summer, hopefully. So we meet twice a week, I mean, twice a month, you know, usually. Usually Mondays, it might change, we'll see what happens here on that one.
Monday is fine with me.
Yeah, so, usually lasts an hour and a half to three, depends what's on the agenda and stuff, so. We used to meet once a month and then what happens with once a month is that they get kind of long. Especially like today when we got a lot of an agenda. So twice a month is a little better for us because then it's, we're more current, you know, on the bill paying and everything else on that one, so that's. So just sure you're aware of that, so, anyway, but.
Separate meetings.
What was that, Josh?
Separate special meetings.
Yeah, well, we'll go there in the summer, we like those, anyway. Well, I'll tell you what, I have, I had this at the, this weekend, I talked to somebody else who's interested too. Another person came and he couldn't, he's going to bring together a letter like you guys did, you know, you and Irene both did a letter. You know, rest cover, like, can do that for us and it's probably next week, this week, bring it to us or to Sam. And then I told him what, we'll probably interview him at the next meeting, December 9th meeting. So, on that one, so we have, we have, you know, keep it, anybody else interested is, you know, we have to keep it open, you know, on that end of it.
It wouldn't, I shouldn't say it that way because it sounds like I'm not interested, but if somebody else has picked, that's fine. You have to pick whatever is best for you.
And like, the commission has a lot of latitude with this. Jamie, you listening? He's not, never mind. So anyway, we, where the commission has a lot of latitude who they appoint for it. So basically, you can talk to some people, if you don't, like the people that applied for it, you don't have to appoint them, you know. It's up to them, if you like somebody, you can, it goes either direction. And then there's no timeline, which is kind of weird, that they fill a position. We want to fill as soon as possible, of course, but right now, we're, you can be kind of open ended. So, that's what we're looking at right now, so.
It's just temporary till the election.
And right, and in the meantime, Eli or Matty is the filling in by North Dakota Century Code. Right, Matty?
Yep.
Come on, let's see big yes. Ooh, okay. Anyway, so anyway, so that way, I need to, he wants to talk to us at the next meeting, I told him that, so. So that way, so I'm going to, basically going to kick the can down the road one more time. I'm sorry, but just, you know, you have to give someone else a look at.
I've got no problem with that.
Okay? Well, thank you for showing up. Thank you Irene for showing up too. I appreciate that, so. Anyway, so we'll just table it for the next meeting on December 9th, on that one.
You're done with me then?
Yep.
No, I didn't mean it that way.
No, I didn't do that, Lauren.
I didn't mean it that way, I just meant.
No, I know. Thank you, thank you for.
I got a number of other things I could be doing with Thanksgiving coming.
Sure.
Yes, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, Lauren, I appreciate it a lot on that one, so. Hey Travis. So, okay, next order of business, we have Nielsen, Brant, Lauch, Forfum. And who have, whoever you represented for them, I have a couple of representatives, right?
No.
No, nobody here?
We're with Central Business Systems.
Oh, they're not here?
No.
Nobody's here?
No.
Okay, we'll just skip that, I guess.
Well, we're a little early, so we'll probably be here by 10.
Yeah, we'll see what happens, okay, we'll skip that for right now and come back. So Central Business Systems, the courtroom printers, you guys are on board, I guess. You want to give us your little spiel?
Well, I do have a spiel, you just have to tell me to stop talking.
Okay.
Did you guys all get the, copy the proposals?
At the last meeting.
Last meeting.
Okay, are they?
Go ahead, Amber.
That was just holding you guys up.
It was.
Do we get a group discount if we put them both together?
Yeah.
All three.
All three, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, totally.
All right, I'm just going to hand out these.
Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely.
I think it'll make a little bit more sense.
Sure.
Okay, so that's the one for the sheriffs.
Okay, go ahead.
And that's what you had last time, eighty six dollars a month.
Okay.
I think I got five, great. So, this is, this is the replacement for the sheriff's department. And then I have the other one, which is the one for, I believe it's down, is it the treasurer's office or the one down at the end of the?
Copyer room.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So, and then that's this one here. And you should have gotten both of these last week, last month, but, so, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's okay.
Go ahead.
I think big, so.
I thought it was if we run over in copies or something. There is that too, if these were, and if these were current, like are these our current numbers?
Yes, yes, and that's what, I think when I talked to Sheriff Caitlin, that's the numbers that we got from somebody here. So, basically, it's the eighty six dollars a month, if you look at the 60 month lease, and it's 189 for the one down there, so basically. But if you read that statement on that first one, if you do both of those machines today, it's not a huge savings, but it is some, obviously, there's not a. Let's see. I could, if you do both of them, I can give you a five dollars a month discount off the sheriff's machine if you, if you, if you want to do both machines. I think the sheriff's needs to be done, I mean, I think their lease is up on their current machine. The other one down in the copy room is not, I mean, it's not leased, it was purchased, I think it's seven, eight, nine years. That was, because I was at the commissioners meeting at the old building, so however long that's been, but it's, it's, it's pretty old and like you said, there are some parts. And if you look at the bottom of that one, it says, basically, you would, you could save eighty seven dollars a month, or eighty six, sixty four a month, by upgrading to a new machine because the cost of the old machines are a lot more expensive than the new machines, so. So altogether, you know, there would be some savings, obviously, it doesn't pay for the whole machine, but you're going to, you're going to be there pretty soon anyway when that one. Eventually, there's going to be parts that aren't going to be available, then it's going to be like, hey, you guys got to do something because if we can't get parts, we can't fix it, so. But there again, that's, that's your guys' decision if you, if that makes sense.
So it would be down to eighty. So, if we do with both of them, like you said, if we get a group discount, it'd be eighty one dollars a month instead of eighty six, or is that?
That's correct, yes, yep. It'd be eighty one for that one and then it'd be the one, the 189 for the one down there and then. But if you, you know, putting it into, the 189 includes the maintenance, so basically, you're going to save the eighty six dollars.
And I was telling them correctly that, you know, if, if the one down in the copier room has more printing and then I print over mine, it's okay because it's all on the lease program.
Yeah, those two will basically would be connected together because they're going to be the exact same model, so just think about it, having two vehicles. Doesn't matter which one you drive, they're both going to, you know, they're both under the same, same cost per copy, everything, so it doesn't matter if you run them on that one or this one. The sheriff's is a little bit different because it's a little bit smaller machine, but those two down there would basically be connected.
And this does, this also covers ink, correct?
Correct, it covers everything the machine needs except for your paper and your staples, which neither one have.
I.
Neither one have staples, obviously, so.
I am very much a supporter for leasing, especially copiers, because the life expectancy of a copier is not long, especially if it's used a lot. And we actually, Aneta Parkview actually works with this business and as far as repairs go and everything, it's right on the, Johnny on the spot. We put a new toner in and all of a sudden it's automatically mailed to us, we don't have to call in to ask for a new toner. It's, it's wonderful. We have an issue, they'll drive from Jameson all the way to Aneta.
If they can't do it over the phone, they have, it's like the next day.
Yep, and there's been a couple of times where they just, let me just log in and I'll fix your, you know, copier for you, or you'd log in and try to fix it, but yes, I'm very much a supporter, especially with all the electronics that go with it and being able to network your equipment is wonderful, so.
Well, that was the other part of my spiel, but she already covered it, so, yeah, it does, yeah, we do have the capabilities of seeing what's going on.
Does she work for you?
She needs to.
Yes. We need to wrap up in Aneta, maybe.
So Aneta gets discounts now, right?
We give discounts to everybody.
So, if we go, if we go over on the sheriff's office, it'll automatically kick over to the other one?
No, not the sheriff, the sheriff's going to be kind of on its own.
Okay.
But the sheriff's office's obvious volume is very low and if you think of it, like I said, the, what she's paying per month is, is eighteen eighty seven is what the, what we're figuring for the maintenance on hers. So, I mean, even if she would double her volume, it'd only go to thirty six dollars, which I don't think, because we got a pretty good copy count off the other, off the old machine. And I think unless something really happens in their department, this is going to be really close, I mean, and the thing is, what we normally do is we do the overages quarterly. So basically, you're going to get a bill every month for eighty six dollars and then after the three months, we're going to look at her volume and say, oh, hey, she ran over by fifty copies on the black, then she gets charged for those fifty copies. So that way, one month if she's high, one month if she's low, and the other month she's even, basically can even out. Does that make sense? That's why we do the quarterly.
That's why I wanted to make sure, because if she keeps going over.
Really, if it's networked, you can just send it to one of the printers that has the high, higher counts, so.
Does she get, I mean, I know she's good, but you, does she get notifications if she's getting closer overages or not really?
Uh, no, we don't. Unfortunately, that's something, with the amount of copies we have out, we would be literally having to have two people calling somebody and saying, hey, you're, you're. But like I said, on hers, I, it's, you know, yeah, it could be a few bucks, but it's not going to be like, hey, at the end of a quarter, she's going to be four or five hundred dollars over our budget.
And that's fine, I just want to make sure, like, you know, because if we keep going over, it'd be nice to get an notification on.
Yeah.
Going over and going to the other machine.
Yeah, and like I said, that's the kind of nice thing about it, is getting as close as we can and with what she's actually doing. And usually, unless something, like I said, something changes in the office, something, something bigger, whatever, then it's.
And if we, let's say we keep going over, is there any way we could adjust this factor?
Yes, the nice thing about it is, okay, so, this is probably a big misunderstanding, our company does not, so if, if you run overage.
Yep.
Say we run, we're thinking you're going to do a thousand blacks a month and say you do two thousand. The second thousand is at the same cost as the first thousand, so it's really not, you're just paying for the copies you use. It's not like you're getting charged a different charge or a different cost per copy based on going over, it's the same cost, so. So actually, we prefer to have you under a little bit, so, because that is the base charge, meaning if you don't run a thousand, you're going to get charged for a thousand. But, that's another reason why we do the quarterly thing, because then you've got three months to run three thousand blacks. And, but like I said, if she runs five thousand, then the two thousand are at the same cost per copy as the first three thousand. So, it's an overage, yes, but it's not at a different rate.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
And if the numbers are really off, they have, they actually do, have contacted us and be like, hey, staff, your copier is, I don't know, something's different, either we need to up it or lower it, or, you know, you don't use as many color copies anymore as we used to, now you're using more black and white, you know, that, we've done those adjustments before.
Yeah, we can evaluate that, I mean, it's not, we do look at the contracts every year too, and we can reevaluate it. If they're way off, you know, then we can't.
Like I said, I know they're, they're good, I just want to make sure that, you know, we just don't get a hit with.
Yeah, no.
I make a motion to accept the leased copiers for the, for the auditor's office and the sheriff's department?
Copier room.
Copy room?
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
I seconded. We have to do a voice vote, don't we, in this?
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
The only.
Okay, go ahead, Josh.
For the discussion. This comes out of sheriff's budget then, or is it from all the general fund?
Uh, general fund copiers.
And it's all figured in for the most part.
Yeah.
We make adjustments every year for it if we need to.
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Good question.
She's already paying, I mean, she already has a lease, which I think this is actually going to be cheaper than what she's paying now. So, so you're actually saving money on both ends.
Well, you know, I just got to make sure, so.
Yep, good question.
Any other, anything else, guys?
The lease that we have, is it with, or he said company that he's with now?
No.
So what happens to the lease that we already have?
It's done.
It's a done deal.
It's done and over with?
Yeah, the lease is done.
And then they just don't get the whole machine or what?
Yeah, if not, we can take it, you know, sometimes you got to take it to Farmore, wherever, I mean, we can, we can, we can physically move it if that's what, if that's what they need, but they'll let you know what you got to do with it, you know, when, when you tell them that you've switched companies or whatever, just let them. Usually, it's just like, hey, okay, you paid your sixty payments.
Yeah.
Let's, you know.
And your lease is done?
Okay.
And then, one of the sheriffs that's under the lease yet too, or is that one up as well?
That is the one that's up.
That is the one that's up, is the one in the sheriff's department, the one in the copier room, that is with these people. And that's not on a, on a lease.
Oh.
So that was the same like mine, when we took it out, yeah, yep.
Yep, okay.
So the question on that, do we own the one in the back room or whatever, how does that work?
Yes.
So we own that, so is there any way, worst case scenario, we can set that off to the side or put it somewhere?
You can put it wherever you want.
And that way we have a spare or maybe put it off for a better option?
Yeah, the only thing we're going to do is if, obviously, you're going to want to end the contract on it.
Yeah.
And then we'll take any unused toners, because that's part of the contract that you have not used, other than that, yeah, anything in the machine or anything.
Is there going to be a fee for ending that contract, right?
What's that?
Is it going to be a fee for ending that?
No, no, no.
Okay.
We'll just, basically, the day we bring the new ones out, we'll, we'll, we'll get the, any copy count and then we'll end the copy, the machine, or the, the contract on that day with that copy count and then from there on.
I just want to make sure there's no hidden fees or nothing.
We don't hide fees in our stuff, that's why I'm telling you.
Best thing about doing business with us is there's not going to be anything hidden, everything is upfront.
I said, that's why I told you about the base charges, there's a, you know, there's a minimum, if you don't hit it, you know, there, there's all sorts of things that could go on with other vendors, so.
Could we get credit if you did take that printer? Because you, because you did take mine and gave us credit for it? Can you do that with this one too?
So you're looking for a trade in?
Well, like, if you take the old one, will you give us something for it? As basically.
Okay. Yes, I can, but it's not going to be very much, because you've got to remember, it's a nine, eight, nine, ten year old copier with the machines that doesn't have parts, so. So what I'm saying is, if you've got somebody, you might be able to get more money by going the other direction, if somebody just says, hey, I want a copier and I just want, but, whatever, you know, yeah. I'm guessing you're probably going to get a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars trade in from us, because like I said, it's just, it's, unfortunately, copies don't turn into.
No, I understand, it's just.
No, no.
Tax, taxpayer profit, we can't just give it away.
No, 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 I understand that, yeah. So, no, yeah, you just, you let me know what you guys want to do and like I said, I can figure, but like I said, it's going to be a hundred to a hundred fifty dollars is what it is, so. So on a lease payment, that's going to save you probably.
A month.
Two, two bucks a month. Somewhere around there, maybe. Can I give a thought?
Yeah, go ahead, Travis.
Um, do we know when those new copiers could be potentially in, as far as good?
I'm hoping, well, today, it should, there shouldn't be no problem getting them in by the end of the year.
Okay, the reason I'm thinking that, if, if, if we did see if we could find, try to sell it, I think we have to advertise to do that legally.
We do.
If we can't, getting them to purchase it, maybe having them dispose of it.
That was another thing I was thinking.
Is, you know, if we have to come in and actually dispose of it, I don't think we can just throw that in the landfill. I think that there's legality of that, we have to pay for disposal, and then if they're taking the toner out, if you get toner for someone to use it.
I'm not taking the toner out of the machine.
Okay.
I'm only taking the toner that's on the shelf.
Okay.
But the toner that's in the machine will, I mean, it's, that's there, that's going to, so when we, I mean, obviously, it's not broke, when we, when we bring new one out, it will be physically working and it'll have, whatever toner is in there, will, will still be in there.
So we can still keep it running to run through that toner, I'm not sure if that's a benefit to anybody's office.
Oh, mine?
Is the machine actually still looking good? I mean, it's printing copies well?
I think so, I mean, we use it quite a bit and I know, we were just talking that we might use it for tax statements.
Okay.
Because.
Well, maybe we move it to your office, just an idea, and then we keep using it until it breaks and we can't fix it.
And dies.
I just don't want to completely just kick a machine, a decent machine off to the side where we can either use it or somehow auction it off.
Sure, like the idea.
Anything else, guys, in the discussion? If not, I'll take a voice vote in this, so, all in favor? Uh, Avril?
Aye.
Eli?
Aye.
Zorn?
Aye.
Edlin?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carried. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I got one question.
Sure, go ahead.
Who signs the documents? You have, because I actually got here. Then I can get everything rolling.
Yeah, let's get it done, so we don't have any more questions.
So this is the sheriff's and I already, I figured you guys might do it, so I did, I did the eighty one for you guys already.
You can find both of these.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yours might come in sooner though, because I actually, I actually got one of those on order.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so yours might be sooner than the other one, depending on how things go.
When you get, when you get those in, just send me the MAC address and then get that authorized.
We'll get her going then, all right, thanks, guys.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys coming up on that one, so. Well, next up is the, you're up, Wayne. And Paul, yep, you're next.
Paul's got some other projects.
Okay. But I think, I thought Jamie was going to be on here too.
He is on.
Jamie?
Yep.
You there? Jamie?
I'm here.
Okay.
I guess have you had any more discussions with Thomas Silvernagle on the right of way for the Decker Bridge?
Yeah, I have, he is not moving off his twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, so we have.
So. I'm not sure what your recommendation is, but yeah, Silvernagle wants twenty thousand dollars, it's 1.22 acres of land to purchase and then like another half acre of land to. That we get a temporary construction. I don't think that's even fathomable. I don't think that's even fathomable. Um, what Silvernagle, when I've talked, when I've talked to Tom, spoken with him several different times and emailed with him. Um, he is comparing this right away acquisition to acquisitions for the the Summit Carbon Solutions Pipeline. And the Dakota Access Pipeline, which are private entities, one of them's an oil pipeline, the other one's a carbon disposal pipeline. Those places were paying like fifty thousand dollars an acre for easements, uh, but they're private entities. I don't think that it's appropriator or fathomable, but that the county should have to pay twenty thousand dollars for one point two two acres. Um, there is a land sale two weeks ago in Cooper, or from Griggs County land. Um, that sold for forty nine hundred bucks an acre, the high I did, um, I I just don't see why it's prudent for taxpayers to pay the twenty thousand dollars. Um, that's up to you as a commission, I guess, whether you want to do it, but I think you'd set an awful precedent for anything in the future.
So any way we can somehow value the land and bring the value and negotiate with him, or is he just doesn't want to negotiate at all?
Well, there is a value, they've KLG during the process, they have picked the value, we actually picked the value, um, as well before we negotiated, the the commission did.
Oh, was that, what was that value, Jamie? Three or five hundred?
Thirty four hundred.
Thirty four hundred?
Yeah, somewhere around thirty five hundred.
That's what I kind of figured, but I couldn't remember if that was from us or something else, so that's why.
Um, that was, that's based, it's it's pretty much done like an appraisal, a real estate appraisal, it's based on on past comps. So, um, I think our offer is Silvernagle's somewhere around sixty three hundred dollars for those.
Forty seven, forty.
For that land.
Four thousand seven forty eight is what we had on the documents we prepared for you. Between and up.
So I don't think, I mean, I don't think it's even close, but I don't know, I I guess I'll leave it up to the commission. Um, I know that in talking with Paul, we could probably get the state involved, I don't think that's going to do any. I I don't think that's going to change anything, um, we might end up having to litigate it because I just don't see that it's going to. It's going to change. I've offered, I asked them to come back with a legitimate offer a couple of different times and it's been twenty thousand dollars.
Okay. One of the things that Silvernagle had asked is if he could put up his own fence and get paid for that instead of having it done through the project. Um, the project's going to put up basically the same fence that he has with, um, a wood post, two metal posts, wood post, four wire, four bar wires. And then, you know, all the wing, page bracing and everything at the corners and, and you know, those good gates and all that. Um, so it'd basically be the same quality and since the state's paying a hundred percent of this project, it wouldn't say at Griggs County anything.
Yeah.
To have him to not have have the project put it in.
By them, by the state.
Right, so, I mean, you can always do an administrative settlement and, you know, and pay more than what what, you know, we recommended, I guess, but that's a county decision, I guess.
So what, so right now, if we can't get this settled, this delays us, correct, from the project or not?
Right, so we've got, we're stamping final plans the next day or two, I think, I don't think they stamped them last week yet, but, uh, um, we just got the certification letters. We're ready to send that out to the DOT for bidding in February.
In February, okay.
So, yeah, you have to have them in ten weeks ahead of time, so that would be this this Friday or this, and this Friday would be the deadline. So, but we don't have to have the right away bought until right, until before the bid opening, they would probably want us to have it, you know, before they post the plans. So they don't have to potentially pull them from the bid opening, but, um. As far as, we're on track other than that right away parcel. And then also Decker is right away on the east end of the job. Um, he asked for a a new approach to be put in on the south side, we adjusted the plans to incorporate that and sent that additional wetland impacts off to the Corps of Engineers. They already got that back to us, they turned it around within a day, which was, couldn't believe it.
Wow.
So, um, everything's in place for that too, and some, um, I guess, did we want to, where was he at with signatures, or was he just saying that he's good, or does he want copies of the?
Decker wants to wait until Silvernagle signs, but Decker, Deckers had no problem with it, they were in my office and visited with me. Um, they have no, no problem with it, as far as I know, they're going to sign, but they're, um, they're waiting to see what happens with Silvernagle. And I don't blame them either.
Right, um, I do have to get you some new documents for theirs because we did add that temporary construction easement to build the new approach on the east end.
Okay.
On the south side of the road there.
So, so, uh, Decker's okay with what we offered him, correct, on the east?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problems having Decker sign it as as soon as we can get something going with Silvernagle, but, um, they came in and visited, they said they don't want to cause any trouble. Um, they were, they were good with it, I spent, I don't know, hour, hour and a half with them one day, um, and and they were fine with it.
Were they looking to potentially get the same dollar per acre as the other landowner?
No.
They weren't worried about that?
No, no, I just, I just don't think that, I don't, I don't think that there's a great relationship between the two of them and I I don't think that they want to see. Silvernagle have a huge windfall, um, and them not kind of receive the same thing. But, um, I don't see them, no, I don't see them trying to gouge the county.
Okay. So what do I guess, are you looking, would it make sense to request like a counter offer from the county or or we stay in?
Well, I, I mean, I, I think he's at that twenty thousand dollars, I, I mean, I've asked, I've asked a counter offer from him, I I've asked if it's. My last email to him was come back with an offers, it, what, what's your offer, and he said twenty thousand dollars, so. I don't know if the commissioner wants to come up with a counter offer, um, like I said, I, I don't know, Paul, I I think it's a slippery slope. You start doing that, then if we have a project in the future where we need to acquire land or or temporary construction easements. I think that just causes problems for us because it leaves all those open to negotiation.
Yeah, I, that that is a concern, especially, I mean, we we set the appraisal waiver valuation fairly high considering what the land is. I mean, we give them every benefit of the doubt to get, come up with that number of thirty four hundred an acre.
My understanding of that land, that I haven't been down there, that's just all pasture land, isn't it?
Um, I think there's some, there there's some tilled acres in there, um, next, next to it, I don't know if he. I think on the south side there. Uh, I I don't remember for sure, we did include some cropland and, um. In that way of evaluation. So we use a mixed, mixed use tillable cropland, pasture land, and non-tillable lowland repairium. So, I mean, I think we looked at the whole parcel, I don't know if necessarily the impacts of building that slope or to to get the bridge in are really. I don't know if that they caused any negative impact to the property overall, to be honest, if by taking that little bit of land and giving him a new bridge. I mean, that provides a much better access where there's none right now.
Well, it's a benefit to him because he gets, I mean, his land is on both sides of that bridge, so he gets access to both sides of of that land.
Yeah, and and that, I think for the regs, that can't be a factor of the nego- negotiation, but it sure seems like it should be.
So we just don't do the build bridge project because of that, we just?
Well, what do you like legally recommend we can do or wha- wha- what would be the best step forward from here, Jamie? That, you know, we obviously keep things going, but, you know, we can't just step in and say, give us your land either.
I guess. We can go back and see if he'll take any less or if we raise our offer, if it'll be satisfactory. Um, I don't know, I guess. I don't really want to do this, but we can do an eminent domain situation, I guess, we're going to have a bunch of money into it, I don't know what's going to change as far as money, but, um. Maybe something that we might have to look at.
What do you, Jamie, what do you take, like, say, let's go figure out like ten thousand, would you take that, you think, or is he firm on twenty?
Well, I'll pull up my last email from him.
What's that?
I'll pull up my last email from him and see, um.
Cause right now we're stalled.
He wrote, um, I wrote, I know you were in a twenty thousand dollar area, is there another price you would consider? Twenty thousand dollars, I will sign that for that, this price this year, next year it could be a different price.
So he's firm this year on twenty, but next year you think a different price, is that what he's saying?
I think he's.
Yeah, it could be higher.
Could be higher, yeah.
Hmm.
Wow. He's sitting down with old or something.
But, I mean, there's got to, there's got to be a.
Go ahead, Rod.
There, there, there's got to be a legal way for them, I mean, to to come up with that number, I mean, you can't. You know, I mean, he's got us over the barrel, that's the only he, you know, that he's, that he's using, you know, that he's got, you know, that he, he knows we want it. And I agree with Jamie that if we pay it, we've set a precedence for anybody in this county that knows that if we're going to build, that they can, you know, that they can now. Hold our feet to the fire until we get the money, but there's got, isn't there a legal, I mean, how how can he come up with that a dollar amount? You know, because if you go to purchase land or anything now, I mean, there, it's a crazy old, there's a whole.
From, from the way I understand our conversation, he's basing it off of, is from. We had, Tom Silvernagle is originally from the Napoleon area, he lives in Wisconsin, but he's originally from the Napoleon area. And both the Dakota Access Pipeline and the Carbon Solutions Pipeline, um, Dakota Access is through, but the the Carbon Solutions is proposed.
Yeah.
And he has friends down in that area who have received big money for an easement for those pipeline constructions. Those were somewhere in the fifty thousand dollar range, um, but they were done by private companies with controversial pipelines. So they they paid substantially more, I know in Nelson County, um, it was like fifty thousand dollars a quarter. That people got for for an inbr- inbridge pipeline about seven or eight years ago, so. I I think it's two different situations, it's a bridge compared to a private pipeline that's controversial. So, um, I don't know, I guess, like I said, my position is that that, um, I think twenty thousand dollars is gouging the county.
It's not, it's like comparing apples to oranges, correct, Jamie? I look at it, I compare it to apples to oranges, you know, the, you know.
Well, yeah, I do, I mean, absolutely it is, this is. This is taxpayer money.
Yep.
Where we have to be accountable to the the citizens of Griggs County for what we spend the money on and if you know we paid for it. Compared to a private company that can go over in and do whatever they want.
And this is a gentleman that doesn't live locally, so we're, this is a gentleman that lives out of state, that's stalling a new bridge for the county. That he will probably never use.
His renters will.
Well, he's up in the area, I think he was up here for deer hunting, but he comes up to the area, he owns a pile of land in Griggs County, I'd say he probably owns. Somewhere around ten quarters of land, um, he has five quarters, well, just out by by me, he has five quarters of land, two, two and a half miles from our farm. Um, so he owns a pile of land in the county, but that's when he he invests in land, he's an anesthesiologist from Milwaukee. Um, and he's been investing in land in Griggs County.
But like I said before, this this benefits his renters, you know, the other side of the river, you know.
Yeah, I, so I don't know, I guess, short of doing eminent domain, I don't know what to do, I just. We're going to end up with money in eminent domain, I don't know if it's something that I can handle by myself, or I need to pull someone else in. And work on it with me, since I've never done one before, um, but, um, I I guess. In my position, I don't think that twenty thousand dollars is appropriate, I mean, it's not even close to where our offer was.
I agree with Jamie.
So, I'll continue working on it, um, I'll let him know that the commission doesn't want to pay twenty thousand dollars. And I'll work with Paul to see what else we can do.
So, so what, if this doesn't, we can't figure this out, what, uh, what happens to, uh? Does, would they lay the project or what's, I guess, what's going to happen, Paul, what, how do, what's going to, what's the end game here? We can't get this done?
If we don't have the right of way acquired in time for the bid opening.
We have a problem.
Bring the, there'll have to be a fold until we do.
What's our due date?
Yeah.
Um, well, the bid opening would be mid, early February, um.
Okay.
So, and the DOT posted plans, you know, a month ahead.
Yeah.
So I would say that they probably want to see the right away in place before beginning of January.
Okay, so we have December to finalize whatever we need to do.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't, you know, let it go till Christmas probably.
No, I agree.
Okay.
So I think this next couple of weeks, we're going to have to get it done, but I, I mean, I don't know, I suppose I can contact him again and see, um, let him know that. The commission decline that it sets a terrible precedent for us in the future.
Yeah.
Um, see what he has to say.
Yeah, I mean, would it be helpful to have some counter offer number to give to him?
That's why I mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, potentially.
Come back with something in the middle again, so you probably want to set it somewhere low, but forty seven, forty eight is what he had in front of him. Twenty thousand what he wants, but that's per acre, that was like four point seven times that.
It should have been.
What should be.
Yeah. That's why I threw out ten thousand.
That's still too much, I think, ten thousand is no.
Seven.
Yeah, well, that's my thoughts, but anyway.
Okay, well, even if you double the waiver valuation, so.
But you remember, get, what we give to one, we have to give to the other gentleman.
I know, I don't want to go too high.
Exactly, yeah.
I, it's not fair to.
If we do what that, it's one point two two acres for the permanent easement or for the acquisition. Um, that sale two weeks ago in Griggs County land sold for the highest was forty nine hundred dollars an acre.
Correct.
For deed and acres, so if we did that, that's fifty nine hundred and seventy eight dollars.
Uh, plus the six hundred for the temporary construction easements.
Right.
So what are we at, Paul?
Sixty five seventy eight would be the counter then, I guess.
Okay.
What's, what's, what's everybody think about that, guys?
Do you think that would be something fair and something like where we could do that, Jamie, but not cause more problems down the road, or do you think that would still?
Well, I mean, there is a, there is a land sale in Griggs County for that amount that just happened two weeks ago.
Correct.
I think he can easily justify that.
So we're still within legal guidelines where it's not going to cause conflict for other future projects where people are.
I don't think so, I mean, I think that's, I guess, if, if you're looking at having land, you always look at the sale price and you say, well, my land is worth what that sale price was, so. I would say, I I don't, I I think it's, I mean, I think that's the most logical thing to do if we're going to up the offer.
So does somebody want to, what are you guys thinking? Make a motion for that?
What's, what's the offer going to be then?
Sixty five what? Sixty five seventy eight would be that forty nine hundred an acre plus the six hundred dollars for the temporary.
Would the motion? Cause it would be for both sides.
Correct.
So the motion, um.
It'd be fair.
Would be to offer both land owners the price of the last county.
Land sale.
Land sale price?
Um.
And that was, you know, that, and that last land sale, that's all extremely high for Griggs County.
Yeah.
I think you just update the waiver valuation for this project based on that recent land sale.
Okay, and whatever those two dollar amounts are for the the two.
Yeah, so it was thirty four hundred an acre, it would be revised to forty nine hundred an acre.
Forty nine hundred per acre?
That's what it was, yeah.
So it'd be forty nine hundred, and then you did the, so I did that plus one point two two and then the six hundred dollars. Sixty five, what is it, six nine seventy eight?
Yep.
I make a motion to accept that.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Rod, someone seconds it, um, any more discussion on this one? Any more discussion?
This is just for counter offer though, if he still doesn't accept it, then we're still dead in the water.
Right, yeah, I think at that point, then we'll have to go to eminent domain.
Yeah, okay, we have voice vote in this because money again, so, um, Avril?
Aye.
Eli?
Aye.
Zorn?
Aye.
Edlin?
Aye.
And Travis votes aye. Motion carried, okay, well, thank you, Paul, for that part.
Thanks, Paul, thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie, yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, anything else, guys? It brought, Wayne? Yeah, you have that furnace, didn't you?
I got furnace bids, those asking bids. I got two bids. Brian Hanson and Bucky Garden Shell.
And what is the furnace for again?
This is for the east room of the shop.
Yeah.
There is no furnace in that.
We really need that.
Right now. Use your, if you do it.
Okay. Okay, okay, that's one, that's one, oh. Man, I'm getting there. Okay, there you go, I got it, hang on, you got that one for her? I need that one, I need one.
I need two.
I know I don't have that. Okay, now we got one, okay.
Okay.
You have the floor, Wayne.
This is for a hundred and fifty thousand BTU furnace and for. And for quality brackets, thermostat, piping, labor, electrical. And outside piping from the present line that's there. Brian Hanson Heating, five thousand ten dollars. Bucky Garden Shell, forty nine ninety. The whole for a hundred and fifty thousand BTU.
And that's, that's everything then, Wayne?
And you, you have funds in your budget currently for this?
It's not budgeted for a furnace, but there is.
There's funds in your budget, so it wouldn't go over your budget line or anything, okay?
Keeping more equipment in that room and be able to thaw the ice off.
Do you have a company preference? The the dollar amounts are so close to each other, it's it's too.
Well, do we have to take the lowest one or not? That's my question.
Actually, you don't have to. You can take whatever you want, to be honest.
Brian Hanson's is five thousand ten dollars and then Bucky Shell is forty nine ninety.
I make a motion to accept the Bucky Garden Shell bid for the furnace.
And Josh, you're gonna have to abstain from the vote. So, anyway. That's right.
I I don't want to create favor to this.
Do I have a second for that motion? Okay, Eli seconds it. Any discussions? What, Rod, what do you think? Rod? Okay, any discussion? Any discussion?
Before you.
Okay, what else?
Mr. Hanson, he came with a hundred and twenty thousand BTU furnace the first time. And then I said, well, Bucky Garden Shell. Put a hundred and fifty thousand BTU furnace in their bid. So then he went back and reconsidered it and then he had to get a electrician and to get somebody to pipe it in.
So this is all his stuff. He's got everything included, just like.
So any any more discussion? One more time, any more discussion or revolt on this? So. Eli. Zorn. Rod, hello? Rod, you still there? What's your vote?
Aye, yes.
Okay, okay. Edlin. And Trambi votes aye. So motion carried, so. Okay, thank you, guys. Correct. That's the last meeting.
So then I was requested to look at some. Before that, I need permission to advertise those pickups going to Jim Anderson head. I need to advertise them so that we can legally get.
The bids on it.
There is somebody that's interested in.
Okay. So you just need, you need a motion from the commission? For bids for that pick, for that, for that one pickup, both pickups, just one pickup? Both pickups, okay. So who wants to make the motion on that one?
I'll motion that.
Okay. Second by Edlin. So it's a motion to for two, two older pickups to put on for the county for bids. So, okay, all, we don't have votes for this, regular vote, right? Yeah, just regular vote. All in favor? All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, that's done.
So I went online to the DOT auction or auction. During did the auction and. Last week. He had. For two thousand fourteen Ford F three fifty, crew cab, long box. Hundred and forty three thousand miles on, six point two, sold for fourteen thousand dollars. Two thousand fifteen Ford F three fifty. I don't think it was diesel. Two thousand fifteen F three fifty super cab, hundred and twenty three thousand miles, six point two. Sold for fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. GMC. These are all four by fours, ninety four thousand miles on with a six point zero liter, twenty six thousand five hundred. Two thousand eleven F two fifty, thirty eight thousand miles on it, six point two. And then there's some Dodges. Court Aftons, which I prefer for myself to drive, but. Two thousand fourteen Dodge Quad Cab, which is not the crew, ninety eight thousand. Six hundred ninety miles with a five seven, which sold for twelve thousand dollars.
These are all state bids, right?
Two thousand thirteen Quad sold for twelve thousand five hundred, eighty six thousand miles on it. Two thousand fourteen. Quad Cab, four by four, ninety eight thousand six hundred ninety miles on, sold for eleven thousand five hundred. All those are photo drives and look in pretty good shape. I did go on the Macphail Motors site, site, but I didn't see anything that was. Close to comparison in price to what this is with the amount of miles on it.
Would would we be better off? First, what funds were you looking at to use? Is it within your budget or are we looking at ARPA funds or? It's in the budget, okay.
It's not. In a category for equipment because I don't have that.
That's fine.
I'm gonna have a reserve of quite a bit of fuel money.
Okay, good.
Could also pay for that furnace.
Rod, you did some work on this. What are you thinking?
Well, I, you know, I went on site and looked. I talked to Wayne a little bit about it. I did look at the Mac, I did stop up at Macville and look at the vehicles up there. Uh which he is right, you know, they're. Probably when you look, when you quote those prices that he just quoted, no, he, those, the the state bids are definitely. Beating, are lower, absolutely. You know, up up in Macville. I was gonna say probably in that twenty five thousand dollar, twenty seven thousand range as well. You know, there was, there is a Ford up there that is a twenty twenty with a hundred and fifteen thousand miles. Three quarter ton with a six point two liter in it. But I think if we can find something on the state, if we just give Wayne the the. A dollar figure, but on a request and Wayne and I have talked about this a little bit. I I would suggest that we go. Minimum three quarter ton, if not one ton, and then and then there were some of them on there that had like five point sevens in them, you know, like a small motor. I don't think we should go to the small motor. I think we need to go to like a a six point four Hemi, a six point two liter uh Ford. We know, we need to get to, we know, we need to get to the bigger. Uh that was one of the things I seen on the state auctions, a lot of them. They're they're running, you know, the, they do have the bigger ones too, don't get me wrong, but I I would, I would say that we need a, like a three quarter ton. One ton, six point two, six point four liter. So that we can pull these uh. Pulling that skids here or something around, that we got enough power to do it. So, but no, I I would say that we should make a. Um I would, I would actually make a motion to give Wayne, we we set a dollar amount to give Wayne the permission to purchase a vehicle.
So what do you think, what do you think for dollar amount? What are you guys thinking?
There is another state auction that comes up. I think it's next week, it's the Bismarck one. Typically, the Fargo one is cheaper, but the Bismarck one is coming up this next week.
Okay, one on the twenty, twenty seventh is one. This week. State option in Bismarck.
The one, the one state owned vehicles is they have a maintenance schedule on them. They um. They have to have their oil changed. They. I guess when I worked in the state, we had to write down our gas purchases. I mean, they're, they're maintained to a T. They're a used vehicle, but they, if if they're gonna, if there's a chance that a used vehicle being a good vehicle, that's a vehicle from the state.
I think Jamie is right about the price. I know in trucks and several, when we were out west, the trucks went for a higher price because there's more money out. Oil people and farmers.
Makes sense.
What dollar amount were you thinking, Rod?
I'm gonna say we're gonna have to be somewhere between twenty five and thirty thousand, you know, what, you know, what the prices he quotas, I would say a twenty five to thirty. But the, you know, and those prices he quoted were quite a bit less, but I I would still say it, you know, a twenty five thousand dollar Bismarck somewhere. The ones, the ones I looked at online. Were said, that was sales way back down and I looked at old auctions, you can go back and I was looking at May and, you know, there was an auction in May and it was a really nice. One ton Chevy with a. Six, six oh in it. And that sold for, and that was like twenty, that was a Bismarck auction and that sold for like twenty five, twenty three thousand, I think. And had like a hundred and fourteen thousand miles, long box, four door. But uh I don't know. That's somewhere in that range, I guess.
Are you comfortable with that number?
Twenty five thousand, is it okay, guys?
Do you want to bump it up a little bit more for more leverage?
Won't spend it, of course, if they don't have to. Prices would have gone up if we'd have kept.
But I also just want to make sure too that it's, if you're pulling us all your budget, that you're not gonna shortchange yourself too. So what's a comfortable number for you?
Well, twenty six thousand should be plenty, I would think. The thirty five hundred Chevy or GMC. Ninety four thousand miles on, sold for twenty six five.
Right, so I don't want to put her at twenty five thousand and you miss something like that for two grand. And then, and then we end up buying stuff with more miles and older to get that. I mean, I I I don't want, I mean, we gotta put a budget, but I don't want to miss something for. Two thousand dollars either.
Twenty eight thousand sound okay to everybody?
I I I'm good with that.
Is that your motion?
Are you good with that? Okay, that'll be my motion then.
Okay, a motion by Avriel to twenty eight thousand dollars for a bid for a used pickup. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Not while I do a voice vote in this. Avriel. Eli. Zorn. Edlin. And Trambi votes aye. Motion carried. Okay. Anything else, Wayne? Yay!
Think I've done enough.
I can touch that. Anyway. So let's, I see the tax structure's here, but let's, let's do, Amber, you wanna go first real quick and see what you have for us?
All I have is I need new tires on my. And it's kind of unfortunate because I know we're probably getting rid of it.
I know.
They're pretty bad.
I looked at them this morning, walked in. That does, you're true. So what do you, what do you, of course, you have no money in your budget, correct? Yep, we know.
Can you get, do you have prices or anything for us?
I don't. I can call Gilbertson's.
Talk to Napa too, because he's pretty reasonable.
I'll do that. I can bring back prices.
Can you do that? Next meeting, the ninth there, we'll just give me a rough.
Gilbertson's, Napa, anywhere else?
That'd be a too big one. Well, unless you want to go to Finlay too. Gilbertson's is probably your best bet, I guess, probably, but. Okay, that's it then, Amber?
Or actually just, if we don't press uh VW motors, they might do tires.
You talk to Kristen too and see what they come up with, yeah.
Try, you know, obviously in Macville are.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll check around.
Thank you.
When are we getting to the COVID funds? And I'm just concerned about a chaser.
Correct. Yeah, if you don't have.
That's the biggest thing.
I know.
Because I don't carry one.
Do you, how much, have you looked in prices for those?
Uh yeah, I sent a quote to you guys. I don't remember what it was, but. It was a couple months ago, I sent that.
Can you bring that to the next meeting again? I'm sorry.
I can come prepared.
Just Monday, you know.
I'll have it all ready for you.
That one again, yes.
Okay, okay. That'll work then. Well, thank you, Amber. Nothing else, nothing else? Okay, Travis, you have a couple, I'll put you ahead first too, because you're pretty quick too, I guess, right?
Yeah, the um with the CBT installation, uh we need to set up what's called an IP sec tunnel between. Um I found out from the state of North Dakota that they are, uh July twenty twenty five, next biennial, they'll be charging for that service. And it's three hundred dollars a month for that. So I didn't want to approve that until I spoke with the commission so that we were aware of it. Uh we did not budget for that for twenty twenty five, so we'll have to come out of something, I guess. But it is needed for us to be able to go forward with CBT for that.
So you see a motion from us today?
Yeah, just to prove it so I can get the, give the state permission to move forward with that. We won't be charged for it until July of twenty twenty five. So next year you'll have to look at where we can pull that from.
Money from the budget for that.
And then ongoing, we'll have to make sure we budget for that for twenty twenty six. Yeah, it it's, you know, it's not a whole lot and it's probably something we could maybe pull from the IT budget if there's anything left over, but.
I know it's kind of tight for you here. We asked you to make it work, so. Are we sitting on a general fund or something like that, Sam?
I'm sorry, what?
If the eighteen hundreds, we we have to come up with, are we sitting okay in our general fund for next year for that or is it pretty tight?
Um you do have a reserve. You do have that reserve too.
But we don't have to do anything till. Twenty twenty five, so. So we actually, we do have some time here, so we can figure something out. But you seem to.
I want to make sure, especially. Especially like they were saying with those cold funds and we're pushing the, one of those back, worst case, you know, fall over there, I think. Worst case, I'm not saying that we are, aren't, I just want to give us a little bit of grace period of what we gotta do to figure this out.
It's a thought we could take some of the ARPA funds and throw it in into the, into his department.
Just cover the twenty twenty five up year.
Right, in twenty twenty five, we'll just throw a little bit more in your budget from the ARPA funds, that could happen too, but, I mean, again, we're not that point, but that's something we could put on that list.
So do I have a? Do I have a motion here, guys, for somebody?
Well, do we make a motion on something that we don't know what we're gonna pull out of yet?
It's not the motion on the the dollar value, I guess. I would say it's a motion for allowing me to create the IP sec. So that where you guys are aware of it, it is a cost on it. I didn't want to approve it without. The commission aware of it.
I will make that motion then.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'll second.
Second by Edlin. We don't have a voice vote in it, do we? Or do we have this one? We do have one, okay. So it's money, so it's wasteful again.
Any thoughts on your end, Rod, or you're pretty good?
Well, I I'm with you. I just, not knowing how much money it is, it kind of. But I I guess if we gotta move forward to find out, but that's my concern.
I agree, but I know, what do you do?
He was thinking three hundred dollars a month, so we, it's gonna be, next year it's gonna be an extra eighteen hundred dollars. So it'd be six months at, you know, three hundred dollars a month, so that'd be eighteen hundred dollars. And then the following year would be thirty six hundred then from there. It's just, when the time comes, it's just from here till then, figuring out what exactly. Line item that we're gonna take it out of to pay for it. So, but he's just basically, we're giving him the, what the go ahead to just. That sound reasonable to you, Rod? Does that sound reasonable to you Rod?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Yep.
Unfortunately, we're kind of stuck. We have to kind of get more forward in this.
Cause this is a state entity deal, we have to do it, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, the, like I said, the charge, uh, this is for us to be able to utilize CBT.
Yeah.
Which we've approved already and they, they are working on that transition right now.
Okay.
And this will allow us then, here at the county to be able to connect to the server.
What is this called?
Uh, IPsec tunnel. Niggle Papa, Sierra Echo Charlie.
Yeah, okay.
I'll swing back around.
Yeah, you might have to write that down.
I'll evaluate the information.
Okay. Anyway, so we motioned the table, second by Edlin, right? So all in favor, or, Avriel?
Aye.
Eli?
Aye.
Zorn?
Aye.
Aye. Edlin?
Aye.
And then Tramby votes aye. Motion carried. So, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks Travis. Yes, miss.
Uh, just, uh, Paul mentioned it. December thirty-first is the deadline for ARPA.
Correct.
And counties must not only allocate American Rescue Plan funds, but also have contractual commitments in place before the year ends.
Yeah. Um, what I'm thinking of doing, we'll have a special meeting just to discuss that. Cause I'd always be here forever, you know, are you following me in this? Does everybody agree on that? There's a special meeting to discuss the COVID and ARPA funds.
There's no, there's no COVID funds left.
No, I mean, ARPA, I mean, excuse me.
Well, my question on that is, I know we were waiting because we were going to wait on those audits. So where are we at with that and are we going to be able to, or do we have to hold on to that money for those audits?
Not audits, you were looking at the reassessments.
Reassessments then.
Linda will be coming up your next, she'll let us know.
Well, I just want to make sure.
Right, yes.
Cause I know that's what we're waiting on, so.
Yes.
I think there's some different requirement for ARPA funds for under ten million, isn't there too?
There, nope, we can use it however we want.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, but as far as reporting too on that, or is that?
Well, we were going to talk about that later, but while we're on it, um, I did get a, um, email from Jamie and from Ben Gates and Ben Gates is from Steel County. And, um, he said that the, that we just would need to say, um, it's for the benefit of the tax or the citizens. And that should blanket cover us for, that we've allocated it and we should be good. And he's going to come over after Thanksgiving and help me file that report if that's what you guys would like me to do.
Yeah, I say I've worked with Finley before on the same thing with ARPA funds and I believe Mr. Gates was talking about, uh, the legal requirements for under ten million dollars funds are a lot less, um, strict on that as far as anything over ten million. I think you have to actually define exactly what you're doing, saying X, Y, Z, X, Y, Z.
Excellent.
And so this way, we just have to say it's for the benefit of the citizens and then we're covered and we don't have to, and then, then they're allocated and we don't have to do anything more. But I didn't know about the contracts or anything like that.
Well, and this is a NACO, the National Association of County, so they're might, they're probably, they're probably covering everybody.
And that might be with the ten million.
Yeah, right.
But I don't know for sure. Yeah, I would recommend working with Mr. Yates. He's, he's got a lot of experience with, uh.
Yeah, he's very good. That's what Steel County did. So he said that he would come over and either do a Zoom call with me or come over and help, actually physically help me do that, so.
Okay.
What we all need to do.
Yeah, so I think it'd be, you know, a special meeting just for that, you know?
Yeah.
Cause I always would just, he'll be at this, you know what I'm saying? You know, so, oh, sometime in the next two, three, couple of weeks or so, we'll figure something out.
Yeah, there are a few wish lists.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Okay.
Okay, well, okay, next, that's done. Uh, Linda, you're up, I guess. Linda, Linda Morris. Who was the guy next to you, by the way?
This is Ryan. He is from Vanguard.
Oh, okay, hi Ryan. It's okay. You have the floor Linda.
Thank you. I just wanted to, just get the.
Anybody, no, Linda, Linda is our new tax director for the county, so.
I can step up for two seconds.
Yeah. Okay, hang on.
Hey, just pass yourself, I'll be back.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, um, ask if I could get a motion to approve the modifiers. That was Samantha, very vigilantly reminded me.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I didn't send on in advance. I didn't know if one was going to be missing.
Yeah, this is a common.
Is this the same modifiers that I sent over before? Yeah, yeah.
We've done this before.
Yep, these are the same modifiers that you guys have done in the past and, yeah, I just.
Wait till Sam gets, or.
And I just went through and looked to see what the assessors had done in the past, you know, with the, the eggland valuations and it was basically.
She's got to do that, I have to use the bathroom.
Yeah, go, yeah.
Can we just motion for a five minute?
Yeah, let's do that. Well, we'll make, I'll make, who wants a motion?
I'm, I'm sorry, but.
No one!
What's going on, I think that would be bad.
Don't make, yeah. Everyone made a motion for a five-minute recess. Do we have a second?
A second.
Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no, same thing, motion carried. Okay, go guys. So.